I'd like to call the meeting to order. The first rule of business tonight is to swear in the three board members who were elected in November, because right now we officially only have six. So the first thing I'll do is call Mr. Arico up to the front, so he can take the oath of office. Yes? Can you bring your family up? I'd like them to come up and they want to take the Bible for you. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Ralph Arico.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Ralph Arico.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
To the office of a member.
To the office of a member.
Of a Board of Education.
Of a Board of Education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter.
And I'm not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to.
Pursuant to.
RS-19.
RS-19.
Or-1.
Or-1.
Nor disqualified.
Nor disqualified.
Due to conviction of a crime or offense.
Due to a conviction of a crime or offense.
Listed in NJSA.
Listed in NJSA.
18A.
18A.
12-1.
12-1.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of that office.
And perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I can ask Ms. Conway, who's second highest vote getter. Can I bring your family with you if you would? Are you on the microphone? Okay. Welcome very well. Raise your left hand on the Bible. Raise your right hand. Raise your left hand on the Bible. Repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Elizabeth Conway.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Elizabeth Conway.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of a member.
For the office of a member.
Of a Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter.
And I am not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to.
Pursuant to.
RS-19.
RS-19.
Or-1.
Or-1.
Nor disqualified.
Nor disqualified.
Due to conviction of a crime or offense.
Due to conviction of a crime or offense.
Listed in NJSA.
Listed in NJSA.
18A.
18A.
12-1.
12-1.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of that office.
And perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
He's got plenty of ability.
Okay, now you're being seen. This is a board member. Your left hand on the Bible. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Yuna Chen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Elizabeth Conway.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of a member.
For the office of a member.
Of a Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter.
And I am not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to.
Pursuant to.
RS-19.
RS-19.
Or-1.
Or-1.
Nor disqualified.
Nor disqualified.
Due to conviction of a crime or offense.
Due to conviction of a crime or offense.
Listed in NJSA.
Listed in NJSA.
18A.
18A.
12-1.
12-1.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of that office.
And perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I can ask Ms. Conway, who's second highest vote getter. Can I bring your family with you if you would? Are you on the microphone? Okay. Welcome very well. Raise your left hand on the Bible. Raise your right hand. Raise your left hand on the Bible. Repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Elizabeth Conway.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Elizabeth Conway.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of a member.
For the office of a member.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter.
And I am not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to.
Pursuant to.
RS.
RS.
19.
19.
Or-1.
Or-1.
Nor disqualified.
Nor disqualified.
Due to conviction of a crime or offense.
Due to conviction of a crime.
Or offense.
Or offense.
Listed in NJSA.
Listed in NJSA.
18A.
18A.
12-1.
12-1.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of that office.
Perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Okay. At this time, I'm going to ask the Boy Scout troop number sixty-six to come in and help us with the flag salute and the presentation of the colors.
Audience, please rise.
Color guard forward march. Color guard halt. Post your colors. Scout salute or hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two. Color guard dismissed. Audience, please be seated.
Okay, now that we have nine board members, I will take the roll call. And at this point, since there's no officers, I'll take it in alphabetical order. Mr. Brescher.
Here.
Dr. Chen.
Here.
Mrs. Conway.
Here.
Mr. Arico.
Here.
Mrs. Maroney.
Here.
Mrs. Patel.
Here.
Mrs. Peng.
Here.
Mr. Shi.
Here.
Mrs. Ward.
Here.
All present. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies of which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon in accordance with the provisions of this act. The Edison Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education administrative offices. Copies of these notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger on January eighth, twenty eighteen. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and the applicable state regulations. Okay, so at this time, I'd just like to read off what the results of the November election was. We had six people who ran. As I mentioned, Mr. Arico had the most votes at eleven thousand four hundred twenty-nine. Mrs. Conway was second with eleven thousand fourteen. Dr. Chen was third with ten thousand nine nineteen. Harish Verma was fourth with ninety-nine hundred seventy. Shivvi Prasad Madiker was fifth with forty-nine sixty-eight. And Anthony Marin was sixth with thirty-five ninety-one total. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for President of the Board of Education. Yes, Mr. Brescher.
I'd like to nominate Jerry Shi.
Okay.
I'll second.
Go second.
I'll second.
Okay.
I'll go second.
Okay. Any other nominations for President? Yes, Mrs. Conway.
At this time, so we have a democracy of more than one person being nominated.
Yeah.
I would like to nominate Beth Maroney as President of the Board of Education.
Okay, we have a second for that? No seconds. Okay. All right, so that means Mr. Shi is the only one who has a motion and a second. So I'll take a roll call vote for Mr. Shi as President of the Board. And I'll do it alphabetical as I said. Mr. Brescher?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
No.
Mr. Arico?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroney?
No.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Seven yes, two no. Congratulations, Mr. Shi, you're President.
Thank you very much.
Okay, yeah, now Mr. Shi will take over as President, so he can ask for nominations for Vice President.
We can change seats. No, we can change seats. I just see. So do I have a... So move on, we're going to nominate the Vice President. I'd like to nominate Ralph Arico as the Vice President. Do we have a second? Mr. Brescher.
Mr. Brescher, okay.
I'd like to nominate Beth Maroney.
Do we have a second?
Do we have a second for that?
Mrs. Conway?
Mrs. Conway? Okay, so the way we've done this in the past is since Mr. Arico's nominated first, I'll take a roll call vote for him. If he gets five votes, we don't need to take a second vote, because five will be the majority. So at this time, I'll take a roll call vote for Mr. Arico as Vice President. Mr. Brescher?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
No.
Mr. Arico?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroney?
No.
Mrs. Patel?
No.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Okay, we have six yeses and three nos, so Mr. Arico, you're Vice President. Congratulations, thank you. Congratulations.
So move on, we have the approval of the parliamentary procedures. Do I have a motion? Mr. Arico, do I have a second? Mr. Brescher?
Okay, this is a roll call vote for parliamentary procedures resolution. Mr. Brescher?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Arico?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroney?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Let's say a non-interval.
Now we move on, the public comments, resolutions only. We have the meeting days, state mandate code of ethics, and approval of the mobiles modular space. So public comments, name, address, six minutes. See now, can I have a motion to approval of all those, you know, three items? Reorganization resolutions, state mandate code of ethics, and finance resolutions?
Well, the code of ethics, I have to read them off.
Oh, you gotta read it, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. So just number nine?
Meeting dates.
No, he had to read it. Nine, one and two. I make a motion. Second, Mr. Brescher?
Now, obviously, on the designation of depositories, you see a blank space there. Now that Mr. Shi is President, his name will be entered into that resolution as President. So we'll take a vote with that modification. Mr. Brescher?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Arico?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroney?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Oh, yes. At this time, as a state requirement, I will read off the code of ethics. Board members can then ask if they have any questions. Mr. Rivera or myself will explain it to you if you don't understand exactly what it means. Then you also have in front of you a certification that you received, copied the code of ethics. They will read off to you and you understand them, and I need to keep those on file. So 18A twelve dash twenty-four point one has the code of ethics for board members. It's required to be read off. The first one, A, I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desire changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures. If anybody has any questions about what that means or want an explanation about it, just raise your hand, let me know. Otherwise, I'll go on to the second one. Okay. B, I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. C, I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them. D, I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members to see that they're run well. E, I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education. I will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the board. F, I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends. G, I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to schools, which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information and in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its schools. H, I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the Chief Administrative Officer. I, I will support and protect school personnel and the proper performance of their duties. And finally, J, I will refer all complaints to the Chief Administrative Officer and will act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution. Okay, those are the code of ethics. Please sign the receipt of those and send them over to me if you would. And at this point in time, Mr. Shi, we can take a vote on the code of ethics.
Okay. All right, can I have a motion on the vote of the code of ethics? Okay, Mrs. Maroney, second. Mrs. Ward?
Mr. Brescher?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Arico?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroney?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay, so the next item, we have a finance resolutions. Normally, we don't do this at the reorg meeting, but this is a special case. We had a discussion about this modular classroom proposal at the last closed session meeting. So we need this classroom to be built before the new school starts, so we need to get this one moving. So we have this resolution here. We're asking the board for approval. So can I have a motion on that? Mr. Brescher, second. And Mr. Arico?
Is this also for USA Architects?
Yes.
Okay, both of them.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Brescher?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Arico?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroney?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay, so the next item, we have a finance resolutions. Normally, we don't do this at the reorg meeting, but this is a special case. We had a discussion about this modular classroom proposal at the last closed session meeting. So we need this classroom to be built before the new school starts, so we need to get this one moving. So we have this resolution here. We're asking the board for approval. So can I have a motion on that? Mr. Brescher, second. And Mr. Arico?
Is this also for USA Architects?
Yes.
Okay, both of them.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Brescher?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Arico?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroney?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay, board member, open discussions. Do we have any comments from any board members? See now, I'd like to, I have something that I wanted to say. As we begin this new year, I want to thank each of my fellow board members for their confidence in me, and I'm humbled by your support. Thank you. Twenty seventeen presents a chance for this board to build on our successes from last year. I look forward to working in partnership with each member of this board as we tackle the challenges facing our school district. Make no mistakes, each member of this board brings a unique skill set, important base of knowledge, and exceptional resources. Together, we can leverage those assets to deliver real solutions to the students, parents, and taxpayers of Edison. This is why I ask this board to evaluate our expenses, seeing where we can cut costs without sacrificing the quality of our education. We should not take a dime away from our classrooms, but we should never fear to cut fraud, waste, abuse and fat from our budget. We have already saved four million dollars. We can do more. Next, I will ask this board to consider how we can best incorporate technology to help our parents. We need to make our schools friendlier and more accessible to our parents, from busing to class registrations. Parents have made it clear that we need a better way. We need to cut the red tape and find ways to make it easier for our parents to communicate with the school district. These challenges will not be easy to face. We, as a board, will and should have lively debates on these issues, exploring the best solutions, keeping an open mind and committing to thoughtful debate. We may not always agree, and that's okay. That is democracy at work. But we do agree on our goal, a stronger and safer school district that honors our educators, delivers value to our taxpayers, functions for our parents and most importantly, delivers the best education for our students. Thank you. Now we open for public comments. Yes?
Andrew Hybel, Howard Avenue, Edison. I'd like to congratulate everybody here. I just have a question. I don't know who can answer it. Are board policies still in effect? Were they voted on tonight or are they still in effect?
Yeah.
So, board policy zero one five two. It says, "The Board of Education is organized by electing one of its members as president and another as vice president. Any member may place a member's name and nomination. A second is not required." So, I believe you violated Robert's rules when you said a second wasn't required before. So technically, we don't have a president and vice president in this board. Dan is still in charge. Because, Dan, you didn't recognize that a second name was put forward and, and a, and a second was not required. So that person should have been voted on, even though it may not matter now at this point, but we don't. Technically, if you're going to follow the board policy and Robert's rules, you don't have a president or a vice president because you violated your own policy. So you need to look at policy zero one five two. And you do have a lawyer here and it's pretty shameful that the lawyer doesn't know the board policies. We pay him enough. So you technically don't have a president or a vice president. I think you have to have a whole new election again.
You have a vice president. It was both seconded and voted on both.
So then the vice president would technically be in charge right now. You'd have to have a new election for a president. Just following your rules.
Are you done?
I would say, I said, I'm just saying you need to follow the rules. You don't, obviously.
So you have a board, uh, policy that adopts Robert's rules?
Right.
And in Robert's rules, it talks about nominations that can come from the floor. This board has a practice and policy that Dan mentioned which requires a second.
You also have a board policy.
I, I didn't interrupt you.
Okay.
So, please don't interrupt me.
Sure.
So, the board, the practice and policy of this board has been to require a second on elections. I wasn't here last year, but I assume it's been the practice and policy for years as Dan has indicated. And that's the policy that this board has adopted and used over the years. So that's the appropriate policy based upon my understanding from what Dan said.
How could it be the proper policy if you just said you have a policy zero one five two that says you don't have to have a second? So are board policies only in place when you want them to be in place? Then we follow Robert's rules and then we follow state law? And then we follow local law? What laws do we follow? If you have board policies, you have written policies on your website, zero one five two, that says a second is not required. Okay, Robert's rules is only in place in lieu of other rules. If you have po- board policies, board policies would supersede Robert's rules. Robert's rules is if you have nothing in place. So you have a board policy, so your board policy would supersede Robert's rules.
No, it, Robert's rules will come into effect when there is no board policy on point.
Right, and you have a board policy, zero one five two, on your website that says a second is not required for a nomination for president and/or vice president. So your board policy, zero one five two, would supersede Robert's rules.
You just said it was not, you didn't need a second.
It says it does not, a second is not required.
Right.
For, for being nominated. So when Ms. Maroni was nominated, Dan said that there's no second, so therefore her name cannot be put forward.
I got you.
That's, that's obviously not the case. Her name could have been put forward, even though maybe she wanted to have been voted in. I don't, that's irrelevant. Procedure was not followed.
We'll look into your concern.
Well, you know, look into it. You don't have a president right now. So I, I really, I didn't interrupt you after you told me not to. So I'm not gonna, don't interrupt me, please, thank you. So I, the reason I brought it forward is now, so you would address your problems now. Because if you adjourn this meeting with the way it is, I will file ethics charge with the state. Okay, maybe you need to go too. Thank you.
I distinctly remember last year that we did not second any of the candidates. And I knew that when you moved to, for the, the second. I do not wish to make any kind of waves at this point. And I think it's okay, the way things turned out, I don't think belaboring it would make a difference at this point in the outcome. So I will defer to Mr. Shi's election. But I do know that in the past, we did not ask for seconds.
I think it's something we need to look at, with our policy, the, the policy committee. That's all.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'm, I'm just saying our policy does state it. So what would take precedent? Would it be our policy?
Yeah, that's what he, he read.
So your policies will take precedent over what Robert rules says. Robert rules doesn't require, um, a, a second on a nomination as well. So we'd have to look at this and see how this impacts it. But the, the president was elected with five votes, so.
Right, but I'm saying just to make sure that we adhere to our policy, can we just redo that?
Redo the whole process?
Yes.
Just for president?
Just for president.
You've already had a roll call with five votes.
Ms. Maroni just, is Ms. Maroni withdrawing her name?
Well, she didn't put her name up. Whoever nominated her would have to withdraw the name.
Someone would have to withdraw her name.
If you were going to redo it. But you've already had a vote and Mr. Shi received five votes. So if you want to now, you'd have to make a motion to rescind that entire vote, start the whole process over again. So at this point-
Does the board want to retake the vote? I have no problem with that if that's what wants to do.
Yeah, just adhere to the policy.
Yeah, it just, right, on a technical.
Right.
All right, so I think you-
So there's two people up, Ms. Maroni and Mr. Shi.
So you have a motion, so you, the president and I have to, um, so you had a motion, uh, to vote.
I knew that ahead of time.
You voted for Jerry, he got in, now you, you have to go back to the point where you had the second. You didn't have a second for Ms. Maroni. And now you have to call the vote for Jerry again in the same way that you did it for Ralph.
Correct.
And then if Jerry receives five votes, there's no reason to take a second vote. Because you can't exceed the five.
What do we have to do or say?
So- We just need to fi- follow the policy. That's all there is.
Dan, let's just redo it.
Because the nomination is not done by a mo- it's not a resolution. It's, it's a board action.
Right.
Correct.
So we just need to revote.
You need to revote for Jerry and revote and Beth.
All right, so we have two people up. Um, Mr. Brescher made the motion for Mr. Shi to be president. Mrs. Conway made the motion for Mr. Maroni to be president. I'll take a vote on Mr. Shi first, and if he gets a majority of votes, then, then he will be president. So I will take a roll call vote again for Mr. Shi. Mr. Brescher?
Yes.
Mrs. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
No.
Mr. Eriko?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
No.
Miss, Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
We have seven yes, so Mr. Shi is president.
Is he looking at me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, now we can move on to, uh, public comments. Um, continue. Yes, President Johnson.
Joseph Johnson, four oh seven Durham Avenue. Friends, colleagues and members of the board. First off, happy holidays to you and your families. And I would also like to congratulate the new members of the board, Mr. Eriko, Mrs. Conway and Mrs. Chen. I'm excited to work with you guys and excited to introduce myself and meet every single one of you. I believe our main focus is the students and the only way we can accomplish this is by working together. Furthermore, on April sixth, twenty nineteen, from two to four P M., which is a Saturday, at the end of the Lena Harris Foundation Mentorship Program, I would cordially like to invite all the members of the board to celebrate the end and the conclusion of the program. Mayor Tony Vissiglione will be our guest speaker for that evening. And I believe it will be a privilege and an honor if you guys would be able to come. Thank you. Oh, I just have a quick question.
Mr. Johnson, repeat the date, time and place.
Yes, April sixth, uh, two thousand nineteen, from two to four.
And where's, where's that gonna be?
It's at the YMCA J C C.
Gotcha.
In Edison.
Oaktree Road?
Oaktree Road, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome? Thank you.
Anthony DiAmmerich, fifteen Rhode Act Circle. Um, first off, congratulations to, uh, to all three. Dr. Chen, Mrs. Conway, Mr. Eriko. There was something I was kind of meaning to get to over the last couple of months, but just haven't had time to. I couldn't think of a better time, though, considering where the state is right now. On for, basically, they're gonna legalize the use of marijuana going forward, uh, for recreational use. And I'm not here to debate that issue. That's not the form for it. But usually when you have bad policy, what ends up happening is it trickles downwards and it falls into our laps. And I couldn't think of a worse time, considering where we are with addiction in our communities, in our schools, um, in our state, for a worse time to enact such a law. Which makes me think, I couldn't think of a better time to reinstate the Dare program in our classrooms. As a matter of fact, just so you know, it's not all talk and gibberish. Uh, earlier today, I had a chance to, uh, meet with Mayor Lanky. We talked about several different issues and, uh, concerns of mine. But one thing I can, happy to report is he also agrees on this issue. He fully supports this initiative. As a matter of fact, he, uh, he told me that the police department is up to full, full task, full, full officers, uh, back to where they were, I believe in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, to support this initiative in terms of, uh, police manpower. He was gonna speak with the chief of police earlier today. Uh, he assured me, so he's fully behind this initiative and I'm happy to report that. I don't know where the board will stand on this. Um, hopefully, somebody could take bull by its horns and, uh, you know, keep this ball rolling. I think it's really important because I think it plays two roles. Number one is it teaches the, uh, the kids the dangers of drugs. But it also allows the children to interact with the police officers at an early age. If it was up to me, I would have it all the way till twelfth grade if we could, but I understand finance is obviously, um, concerned. But he assured me that he's gonna support this initiative. He's ready to go on this, so I just wanted to pass that information along. I'm gonna come back in about a month or so, see if we could, see where we are on this. But I think it's something important. I think it's also something that we could all agree upon. It's a winning issue. I think the parents and the community will support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Thank you. Um, so, Mr. DiAmmerich, I loved the Dare program. I loved it when my daughter went through it. She's thirty-three years old and still has her Dare t-shirt, which you wouldn't dare give away. It's a very coveted item in the dresser drawer. But to me, the Dare program is one program that truly sticks with the children. You know, they go through a lot of various programs on all kinds of wonderful things. But I always felt Dare really worked and I would be very happy to see it happen.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Uh, I, I agree. Um, the Dare program was one of the, uh, driving factors for my son to become a police officer when he was at Ben Franklin. So I believe that in the Dare program, hopefully with our class three officers, uh, in the buildings shortly, hopefully, we could utilize them too. They're all retired police officers. So they could maybe do, or have a part in a Dare program, but I think it's a great, great program. And I think we, uh, really need to start that back up, especially in the elementary schools.
Actually, that's something we, when we talked to the police department about the security, you know, school, that's part of their education to the, the students and, and the teachers, that's, you know, uh, a chief has a committed that, that's part of their, their day-to-day job. So I hope that, that, you know, we'll continue to do that. Thank you. Any other public comments? Yes?
Joseph Fermano, fifty-five Avenue C, Edison, New Jersey. The people who won, Ralph. It was my pleasure to nominate you years ago. You're old. I'm older, but you're old.
Not that he was still young.
No, he's, he's old. He's really old. I'm sorry, I'm not trying out for the stress factor. Elizabeth.
She's retired.
She retired, but she's not old. I sat on the dais where you're sitting now. For four years, I was the vice president and two years, not. You stood at this podium. You stood at the podium at Edison High and at J, JP Stevens. And you never talked about anything but the kids. That's why I supported you. Everybody has to know that the kids were the most important thing that you always talked about, always. Thank you for doing what you do. Ma'am, I can't pronounce your name and I apologize. But for you to stand up and take on this responsibility, it's really a big thing. People don't know what you really go through. So I want to thank you personally for stepping up and protecting, well, according to the statement that you made at the candidate night. You stated waste and mismanagement. Ma'am, go for it. Do the best that you possibly can. Get as many people that you possibly can to listen to you. Because waste and mismanagement, even though it's a great slogan, some of the people on the board that are your colleagues now have fought tooth and nail to go out and get bids, to go out and make sure that waste and mismanagement are being addressed. Your president stood there at Lindenall, I believe it was, and there was a, there was a war going on. The fact of the matter is, is that they need help. And thank you for stepping up. And Liz, you're not as old as me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Yes?
Even all Brett Baker, one forty Grandview Avenue, top of the hill, Edison, New Jersey. Uh, I wrote things down today. Uh, first, a congratulations to Mr. Eriko, Ms. Conway and Dr. Chen. I wish nothing but the best and trust that you three will operate with nothing but impartiality and fairness along with the other members of your board. Second, a celebration. Uh, I'm stoked tonight to look at this board. I wish my son were here to look at a board that is made up of six women and four members of our community of color. I, it's awesome. It reflects the diversity of our town and I think it's, it's the right direction. So I'm thankful to the twenty-three thousand one hundred and eighteen voters of Edison who helped develop that diversity and celebrate it and encourage the other sixty or so percent who didn't vote to make sure you vote next year. Third, a hope, uh, and for those of you that know that I like to come to these meetings, I'm gonna try and incorporate song lyrics every time. Uh, the incredible Stephen Sonheim once wrote the following, "Careful the things you say for children will listen. Careful the things you do for children will see and learn. Children may not obey, but children will look and listen, and children will look to you for which way to turn." And so to the nine of you, I ask at the reorganization meeting to keep that in mind for the next twelve months, that your responsibilities for the future of not just the current fourteen or so thousand students in the Edison Public School District. Sixteen, I knew somebody was gonna call me out. I was waiting for Dan to do it. For the over sixteen thousand students who, uh, attend Edison and the thousands more that will in the future, including my own son, that you keep that in mind. Um, may you all and may we all, uh, seek to work together, be non-divisive and represent the people that matter the most, the children. And finally, a plea, uh, for solutions for space and full day kindergarten that's done with collaboration between the board and the city. I don't wanna name names, but I see members of the council here and I hope that they too will help listen to our plea. Uh, New Jersey is steadily and quickly moving towards full day kindergarten and we need to be prepared. And the last thing we need to do is be caught off guard as the fifth largest district in this town, in the state, with a unfunded mandate for full day kindergarten. Because I can tell you that as a voter and a taxpayer of this town, I won't accept we don't have space. I'll say that to the Board of Education and I will say that to the council, that we must work together, we can work together, we should work together. And I look forward to the overcrowding commission continuing. And finally, I'd like to echo the encouragement for Dare to continue in Edison or start back up in Edison. Middlesex County runs it in Woodbridge, which, as I think about it, I can't help but think at least Woodbridge has it. Uh, and so let's make a statement and let's, let's have Edison bring it back. Uh, and would strongly encourage, it sounds like the police department has been actively looking at doing it. I would just strongly encourage them to also work with Middlesex County to incorporate a smart and well-run program. Because it's been a while since Dare has been done well anywhere. I know I'm not old, uh, but I remember when I did it and it's been a while since I think Dare's been done well. But I know that Middlesex County has learned a lot of really good lessons in running at Woodbridge. So I would just encourage you all to push, uh, the police department and the chief to have that as well. Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Jerry, can I?
Yes.
Brett, I think your son and my son are entering kindergarten the same year, so I hear you.
All right, any other public comments? See none? Can I have a motion for Jordan? Okay, Mr. Eriko, second. Mr. Brescher, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.